Good evening. I'll now call the City of City Council meeting for Tuesday, November the 20th to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Holes?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda as submitted.
So moved. I'll second.
Of a motion by Murrow, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Brings us to item five, this is an evening public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address the council under a public input? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Those at homes will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for accounting period ending November the 16th, 2012. Item B is the meeting minutes for the November 8th, 2012 city council meeting. Item C is the new library project change request. Item D is a introduction and first reading of ordinance 325 amending chapter 52 and 53 of the city code concerning sewer and water connection charges. Item E, resolution 1991, accepting a donation from the Cannon Falls Fire Relief Association. Item F, utility extensions to Hanson Home and adjacent property. Item G, the Cannon Cruiser Car Club annual request. Item H, the second reading and adoption of ordinance 323 and summary of publication authorizing the sale of city-owned real property. Item I is the application for payment number 12 for the 2011 West Side Street Improvement Project. Item J is Riverside Terrace Sewer Credit. Item K, resolution 1992 authorizing the 2013 city license renewals. Item L is first reading of resolution 1993 Comprehensive Municipal Plan Amendment. And item M, introduction and first reading of ordinance 324 zoning property to Southeast Campus PUD. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
Yes. D, F, and K.
Okay. Item D will become item A, which is ordinance 325. What was the other one?
F.
Item F will become item B.
Wow, I got A and M too, Robbie.
What was the last one there, Phil?
A and M.
Oh, it's K.
Phil.
K.
And now it'll be resolution 1922. The just incorrect claims will be coming down to item D.
Oh, Dave said to bring down L and M both. If I'm gonna bring down one.
And we'll bring down items L and M will be items E and F.
And then did you get the A?
Yeah, I got your A.
Thank you.
Okay, with the exception of items A, D, F, K, L, and M, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved. I'll second.
Of a motion by Bill, a second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. That'll bring us to item seven, which is now council business. Reports will be item eight. Ordinance 325, the introduction and first reading of ordinance 325 amending chapters 52 and 53 to the city code concerning sewer and water connection charges.
Aaron, I read it, but I still don't understand all of it. I'm sorry. It's lateral and trunk, explain the difference with...
Well, trunk are your, kind of your big main lines that would run out to serve an area, and the lateral lines are the lines that run off that to serve the different parts of that big area. So your mains are your biggest lines, and they would run out to, say, a hundred acre site. And then your laterals would connect off those mains to serve different portions of that hundred acre site. So basically, it would be the extension of all the, you know, the water sewer mains, and then any supporting lines that come off those as well. For the development area.
And each would be assessed according to the sliding index that you have for the engineering costs?
Right. Well, that would be what the cost would go up by each year. So, you know, if you do a project this year, but the land, a portion of the land that's actually served by it doesn't get developed for five years, we track that, basically, that price index of construction, and that's how much the base amount would go up each year to take into account construction cost increases. So basically, what it means is that you don't, if a person pays today, the person that pays five years from now doesn't get a better deal. They're basically paying the same price when taking into account for inflation.
Okay.
So that's what that is. And what we do is that there's basically a method with the engineer that we say that, okay, this line goes out to serve its ability to serve 100 acres, and here's those acres. And so the cost is divided up on a per acre basis, so then we certify with each of those acreages how much the base amount was, and then each year that a base amount gets increased by the price index.
And what about the usage? I read some passages about it's determined about usage, possible usage of the sewer line too, of the sewer line connection?
I'm not sure what you mean by possible use.
Well, it says with the sewer, I didn't quite understand that part of it. When the sewer line connection goes in, it's the amount somehow is determined by the usage of...
Oh, well, what it says is if you run a line out there and you have one industrial company that needs, say, a 20 acre site for their plant, and then for storage and everything else they need, they're obviously a different user than if on that same 20 acre site you had 30 houses. So we could take, we would take a look also at basing what they pay off of what they're gonna use. So 30 houses is a much different use, and you'll have many more lines that would have to go into that site versus one large industrial user that just needs a big site for outdoor storage and things like that. So generally, what you'd see is that the housing development would probably have a higher charge because they're having a much higher impact and use on our system.
And if they changed somehow...
Once it's in and paid, you can't do it again. So let's say that you have the one large industrial user, they're there for 10 years, and then 10 years later, they sell off, they bulldoze it over, and they put up 40 houses. That line portion's already been paid for. We can't recharge again to the next use. Once it's paid for once on that parcel, it's off the books then. You can't go back and do it again for future users.
Okay. And this takes away any confusion or problems with doing it each year for each different parcel or something?
Right. And that's what we want to do with this, is try to set kind of a uniform way to handle it instead of having to either work out assessment agreements, or, you know, do those sort of things with all these projects. Just, we've got it set in place, and then everybody knows too. So when assessment searches are done, that pops up on the assessment search if someone's trying to buy the property, that this is there in the current amount, and...
So they can figure out what his cost is?
Right. Right. So even the proprietors know what the cost is involved if they want to develop or sell in the future.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions on the future changes for water and sewer main extensions? Any more discussion? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as presented.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Bill, second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Brings us to item 7B, which will be the Hanson Home Utility Extension.
Yes, there was some discussion about this in the town about, there were several little scenarios passing around the community about this. The final agreement, I think, is fair, and I think the bottom line is for the community, the community doesn't lose any money, the homeowner is treated fairly, he'll be paying taxes, he paid a great deal of hookup charges, and he will be paying according to assessment agreement, I believe, right? He'll be paying according to assessment agreement, he'll be paying the full charges of the water line going out there. So I don't see a problem. I think it was a very good compromise, and I think we should go along with it, because I'm sure we will.
Yeah, and one other thing in there that was, that we asked for also was Mr. Hanson releases the city from any future...
Future. Good.
Things against us.
Yep. That's fine.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Can I ask you a question?
Come to the mic and sign in, please.
One one five South First Street. Cannon Falls. Now, you talked about concession. We reached a, what was the word you used, Bill?
Consensus of opinion.
Yeah. How did this get to where we are with it? Where you have to fear repercussions later on?
We weren't fearing, it's just a normal legal...
We just want to cover our bases.
It's just a normal legal thing that you do when you sign an agreement. You often do something like this.
Now, you're assessing two other lots?
Yes, and when...
Would you want to, could you explain it maybe a little bit?
Well, the cost, and it's estimated right now because we don't know the exact dollar amount, but it'll be spread out among the three parcels in question. Two of the parcels are not currently developed. At such time in the future that they become developed, then the people that develop them will have to pay for that, and that will also include the item we just previously approved, which helps cover that, if I understand that correctly. And so...
I asked Aaron at the municipal meeting, what happens to debt structure, debt service wise, if those lots just sit there?
Well, the fees are always there. So yeah, if it takes 20 years for them to develop, then we carry them for 20 years. But the costs that we assign, so in this case, if it sticks with what we assume about 11,000 per lot, that would increase each year by that construction index. So in 20 years from now, whatever those increases are, they would pay 11,000 plus all those interest increases. So the goal of that is, is that if somebody pays it today, and somebody pays it 20 years from now, they're technically paying the same cost when you take into account inflation.
Do the potential owners of that land now, are they aware of this?
As far as I know, they are.
As far as you know, they are?
Mm-hmm. The city hasn't talked to them. I mean, I don't know, unless Dave has, you know, specifically talked with them about it, but, you know, it's, you know...
Isn't there some risk of you surprising them? And then maybe facing, whatever word that was, repercussion?
Well, in a situation like this, it would be similar if we would do it, well, almost any other situation really, is that if the utilities out there that benefit someone else, we want to take that into account. Because that's the problem that we've had in the past, is when you extend utilities out somewhere, and not everybody needs them, you've got to work out assessment agreements, or you've got to go through that process of actually assessing all these properties, where in this way, what we're trying to do now is that instead of having to go through all that, we set it up that if they develop in the future, they're gonna pay their fair share of it, it'll be uniform across any sort of development like this, and we can handle it, so...
So the city's gonna sit on $20,000 some thousand debt? And debt service it and...
Well, we would, we're not gonna take out debt for it. I mean, we're gonna pay it out of, you know, city capital funds, but yeah, I mean, we won't, we'll have to carry that cost until it gets paid for, yes.
And let's say that 22,000, 23,000 isn't developed for 10 years, and when you add in all that interest, all of a sudden, it comes to 30,000, then we'll get 30,000 back from the people that developed those two lots.
Do you kind of like to do things like this? I could ask another example.
Would not be my choice, but...
Yeah, okay. Explain yourself there. What do you mean, kind of like to do things like this?
Well, I've got two lots up beyond me on Spring Garden Hill.
Yeah?
Across from Bud Woodhome. And at the point of when the new sewer and water was put in, they were deemed unbuildable. But since then, we know that that probably isn't true. I hate to point at you, Dave, but Dave, I talked a little bit with Dave, and Dave said, well, we'd have to look at them, and if the reason they weren't unbuildable would be the bluff law. Now, and I'm all for bluff law, and I preach bluff law, but we've put a couple structures in that are much more in need of variance than these two lots would be. So where am I getting at? Now, if those two lots are developed someday, even though they weren't developable according to the original, they do have water and sewer knocked in. I guess my question is, should those lots have been assessed? Or will they be assessed, should those lots, should those lots have been assessed on a principle similar to this?
Yours, you mean?
On Park Street, around that corner. Because they had water and sewer stuffed into them, and they were never assessed.
Oh, there's water and sewer stuffed into your lots?
Well, they're not my lots, they're on Park Street.
Okay.
I think they're beautiful building lots.
Well, the issue would be is that if there's any assessments that were going to be done, they would have been done at that time of the project. So, you know, now if they're gonna be built on, we can't go back and assess them, their share for work that was completed whenever that was put in. I don't know when that was. So there's nothing we can do about it now with those two lots. I mean, they would have, if they've already got the utility stubs and things, they would have to charge, pay their connection fees, but...
That would be it, okay.
They wouldn't be charged back.
Right.
But now, with what we're proposing to do with this ordinance change, is that we could do that. That now in the future, anytime we do these sort of things, even if the lots are considered potentially unbuildable, things change, like you said. I mean, zoning can change, you know, building, you know, ways of building can change, so we can have it set up still that when they are developed, if somebody's gonna develop them, they'll pay their fair share. Even if we didn't, back at that time, think they would have to, and we didn't set up an assessment with them, or an assessment agreement with them. With, way we're moving forward with it now is that we can, that we can track it, and we'll know that there's a lot, if somebody develops it, here's what their share of it's gonna be, you know, if something would change. This code change gives us that ability to go back and do those sort of things.
So if I and Bud Woodhome, let's say, would buy a lot across the street from him, we wouldn't have to pay a footage assessment, we would just have to pay a hookup assessment?
Yeah, if the utility's already there, we can't go back and assess you for the word it's already been done.
Yep.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Anyone else wanting to talk on this matter? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve item 7B, which is the utility extensions to the Hanson Home and adjacent property.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Bill, and the assessment agreement, I should say. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Brings us to, let's see, item 7C, which is resolution 1992 authorizing the 2013 city license renewals.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Jeff, Jeff, is there any, that's okay. Is there any problem with license renewals on any establishments?
No.
Did you find everybody in compliance?
Yes. But the process that we utilize basically authorizes the renewal of the licenses, they still have to supply us with, you know, all the appropriate paperwork, whether it's insurance information...
When do they begin? In January, they start?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, one of the reasons I bring it up is we passed a law last year about establishments that sell liquor have to train their employees and that. So you have to check on that, right?
Yep. And I've been working with Diane and making sure that that information is included in the packet that went out, or goes out to them. I don't know, I didn't get a chance to talk to her today to see if it had gone out.
Okay.
But we're making sure that that it goes with, so that they, you know, can supply us back with the appropriate documentation, affidavit, whatever, you know, is deemed to meet that requirement.
Okay, good. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the license renewal? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve resolution 1992 authorizing the 2013 city license renewals.
So moved.
A motion by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Moves us to item D, which is the just incorrect claims.
Okay. Aaron, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to read this till tonight. If I would've called you, and maybe I could've got some answers. But I was looking over the budget, the monthly budget reports you send out, and I looked at page one of two. And the ambulance capital is in a negative, and the administration capital's in a negative, and the park board fund is in a negative there. And I guess with talking about budget tonight, I just looked at this and wondered, wow, what's going on here?
Well, and don't remember that the fund's not in a negative, we're just, we've spent more than we maybe anticipated we would this year. So like when you look at the, say, park, the park board fund, we usually throw in just kind of a placeholder number, which we threw in $20,000 this year. Well, we got the, we ended up getting playground equipment, which was that $53,000, but the park board fund itself has $175,000 in it. So even with this, you know, the park board fund is still fine, it'll still have 100 and plus some thousand dollars in it afterwards.
Okay.
So it's just that we're over budget for the year. And that's the same when you look like at the administrative capital and the ambulance capital as well. It's just that we budgeted so much, and we ended up making maybe some purchases this year that we were gonna do next year, or something came up that we needed to buy. But that's why we have those capital funds, is that it doesn't always go exactly according to plan. So sometimes things will come up that we need to buy, but we have money in those funds to cover this. So none of the funds are going negative, it just means that we're spending more than we thought we would this year, but we work that out then in future budgets for those funds. But it just means that something came up we needed to get, this was, and this is why we have those funds, is for emergencies like that. But nothing's in the negative with any of the funds.
All right. The other one was page one of six. I see we got Black Mountain Software in there for 2,500 bucks. Is this some kind of a contract deal? I kind of thought some of this computer stuff was gonna drop off when we hired our own tech.
This is just, we have a software program that does all like our utility billing, our budgeting software, stuff like that.
That's for assessments?
And this one's, okay, this one's for assessments. So we have an annual fee that we have to pay for the company to renew the license. Basically means they give you the upgrades, stuff like that. It's not tech support or anything, it's just what they charge you annually to use their software.
Yeah.
Programs.
And programs, yeah.
Okay. And then two of six, the frost service de-ice equipment for a thousand bucks. What was that all about for the city hall or something? Frost service de-ice equipment tota?
Near the top, up quarter.
1,042 over there, that's the total, down the right-hand side, like the fifth or sixth one down.
That's the snow and ice for Tom's.
Well, that's for the public works?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, general fund includes public works and everything, two streets.
Okay. Then the other question I had, I'll try to make this quick, is Excel Energy, we had so many refunds. What is that all about? I noticed we had so many charges, and then they're turning around, and there's so many refunds in there. One spot, I guess I can find it, but it was even quite a large repair bill on a streetlight or something. So do we actually pay Excel to fix our streetlights? Do we actually own them?
Some we do, some we don't. It's kind of a fun deal with the streetlights. There's not necessarily a set way that we have to deal with some of those, but yeah, I mean, if they're, in most cases, they're our streetlight, not always, but in most cases, they are. So if there's a repair issue, generally, we do have to work through Excel to get them fixed. Not all of them are ours, but some are. But we do have to pay them to fix them if there's a problem.
And what, like the one Excel on page two of three, is the credit water of $1,830. And I, they gave us the credit back on the streetlight on page one of three, I was just wondering what all them, the credit on the pool of minus 11499. I like credits, don't get me wrong, but I was just wondering if there's over charges there to start with, that they gotta do this, or what's going on here?
I don't know that answer.
We'll have to ask, we'll ask Michelle and Sarah about that, and we'll find out. We'll bring it back for the next time.
Okay. All right. No big deal. Thank you. That's it.
Any more discussion on the just incorrect claims? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending November the 16th, 2012.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Bill, second by Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carries. Brings us to item 7E, which is resolution, the first reading of resolution 1993, the Comprehensive Municipal Plan Amendment. Mr. Maroney? Who has a question?
Yeah, if Leroy has a specific question, I'll try to address that, or questions. Or would you like a presentation on the recommendation, or both?
I just, our last planning commission meeting, actually wasn't able to get my calls done, so I scheduled one for after the planning commission meeting, because I knew the planning commission meeting was gonna be a half an hour long. And needless to say, this issue was brought up, and an hour and a half later, I had to apologize and leave, and it was still being debated, and it got debated for about two hours. So I just wanted all the council members to be aware of that the planning commission considered this to be a very important issue. Also, I wasn't there to vote, I'd ended up in a two-two tie. If I had been there, the planning commission would have voted it down. So I wanted to bring up some things. I've spent a lot of time with Dave talking about this after the planning commission, trying to come to a conclusion on it. So I would like to just brief the council on what was discussed, and how big an issue we felt this was. The one thing is, if we go with this ordinance, it really changes it for the three people that are there. The one problem that I have and a couple other planning commission members have is that one of the person that owns property out there right now is in bad health. If for some reason, this person that owns that property would go through some health issues for a year or two, and we voted for this, and nothing gets done out there in the next year, when whoever comes back and runs that property, or if he gets well and comes back, he can't go back with the same thing. The other example I can give you is that if Eltoff's hardware, if we vote for this, if Eltoff's hardware, Ace Hardware came along to us and said, we want to double our square footage, and Grandpa's Garage is a perfect fit for us, it could not go in out there. Randy Retzko was the only one here to speak for himself that night. I do need, I do know Steve Bauer, I guess I could've called him, but I didn't, to get his input. I know Mr. Lupke is probably not capable of speaking for himself right now. And Randy had reservations about this project. In some ways, he was for it, he wants the hospital to go through, he knows the importance of that, but some way, all these restrictions were put on him afterwards. He has to pay his taxes, he's got his bills out there and his upkeep. But if something would change, he can't necessarily come back if somebody come in and wanted to rent all the buildings and do something different. So we are really restricting them out there if we change this. So if, because the hospital built out there, to give you another example, would be, say, because of the location, the overpass and everything, some car dealership came along and said, wow, we're gonna buy all these three properties and put a car dealership in there. That does not qualify. So I'm really concerned, two of the planning commission members brought up the fact that they thought the perception could be, is that we're changing this because of the Mayo Clinic... perception could be, is that we're changing this 'cause of the Mayo Clinic, and we're letting our three people that been here for years hang out to dry here. And I said, that's very easy to get that perception off of this. So I want the council to just be, know for sure that, once we change this, Dave and I talked, and Dave was telling me too. He said, you know, one thing this overpass is gonna do is cost us money. It's gonna change zoning, it's gonna change everything. And I said, well, actually, there's two of them. Once the hospital comes, it's gonna cost us money too. Because now we're trying to adjust and we're trying to fit their needs. The, the other thing would be is if the hospital would decide to buy these three properties, it would go into their property thing out there. And of course, we lose our tax base. Now, these three buildings out there have a fairly large tax base between them. And I feel obligated to protect that. Because if a nonprofit bought them and built out there, we do lose them three buildings on our tax base. So I realize this is a real complicated thing. I know that Aaron and Dave have put a lot of work into it. So I feel kinda guilty to question this and to stir this up. But I really would like to see it tabled and addressed again. And I know we have an end of the year deadline for a moratorium is up out there. But I really feel that I need to protect the three owners out there, and I need to protect our tax base. And I don't think we're doing that if we add these three in on the campus hospital thing out there. So I just want the council members to be aware of all this, and that, that it was a big issue at the planning commission. That's it.
Just Leroy, one correction, after you'd left the planning commission meeting, I stand in in your place, so it did pass three to two.
Yeah, that's what I said. If I had been there though, and had voted for myself, it would've won the pass.
Is there a reason why these three properties are in that zone?
Dave needs to answer that, it really gets complicated.
I'll explain it as briefly and concisely as I can. All of this began with the creation of the moratorium along the Highway fifty-two corridor. Where not just the area in and around the hospital, and these three properties were included in the moratorium area, but everything in the B-two zoning district, and a little bit of industrial property and some urban reserve. But the whole fifty-two corridor was, was purposely put into a moratorium area in December of last year and January of this year by ordinance. What that then had us do is go through a planning process to look at, what are the implications of the Highway fifty-two project? What are the implications of the new interchange, the Goodyear County Southeast Collector Road? What about the secondary roads that are gonna be built in the township area? Should they be annexed? Should we extend utilities to them? We have a sexually oriented business that's being acquired by the state of Minnesota that's gonna potentially be relocated somewhere. So we wanted to factor that into the planning. And just had a number of unanswered questions. So over the course of, of this year, we've been looking at those and came back to a public hearing with the planning commission last week with a recommendation that would change the zoning on basically four properties. Three that are privately owned, one which is owned by the, by the hospital. But those four properties, which constitute about fifty, a little bit more than fifty acres, would be rezoned with new zoning restrictions other than the current B-two allowances, of which the properties are currently zoned. So it's gonna change what can be and can't be developed in that area. One of the things that can't be developed in that area, which was part of the planning study, was it precludes sexually oriented uses from developing in close proximity to the hospital or within this acreage itself. So the, the, the end result of the planning study really took this approach, made this recommendation to the planning commission. We did hold a public hearing, we did notify the property owners by mail of the hearing. And as Leroy said, we did have one property owner come in and, and make comments to the commission. One of the things that, that I discussed at length with the planning commission, as we had a long deliberation that night, as Leroy said, was the fact that our recommendation as staff is not to totally deny anyone the rights that they have to develop their property even within this new zoning district. And by that, I mean that each one of the property owners can continue with their existing businesses as they are, as legal non-conforming uses in spite of the, the zoning change. So if this is adopted, it's not as if anything really changes for any of the properties out there with regards to what they can and can't do on their properties. They can continue to exist as legal non-conforming uses in that district. Should they wish to expand in the future, they could do that subject to a conditional use permit. One other thing we talked about with the planning commission was, in the event of Leroy's example, let's say that, that a hardware store does wanna locate in this area after it's been rezoned, if it is to be rezoned. That would still be possible, subject to an amendment of this particular zoning classification. So if a hardware store wished to develop within that area, they would need to come back to the planning commission, hold a public hearing, make their proposal, and if the planning commission recommended to amend the ordinance to allow, in this example, a hardware store, and the council adopted that, that could happen. So we were pretty careful with our recommendation to make sure that the existing uses out there could continue as legal non-conforming, which they can. And that in the future, if the new zoning didn't work for a landowner, they would have the opportunity to come in and request an amendment at that point, which they do. And finally, I think, well, yes, this certainly looks like the zoning will be such that it will allow the hospital to develop there. I did also suggest to the planning commission, that at least in my view, that I think the, the three properties that we included within this hospital district, since they're right next to the hospital itself, that those three properties will see enhanced values as a result of the hospital being built in their neighborhood and their back doors. And we really wanted, from a land use perspective, to, to be able to, to encourage complementary uses to redevelop over time throughout that entire area. And we think clearly that the hospital project is gonna be the first major development there that's really gonna start that ball rolling in that direction. So there isn't really a short answer, I apologize for that. But because of the physical conditions out there, the kind of the lay of the land, what's happening with the road systems, what's already happened with utilities, what's not gonna happen in terms of growth and annexation with Cannon Falls Township, their preference is that we not annex all of the land around these secondary roads. We factored all these things into the equation along with the hospital's plans and came back with, with this recommendation. So I think in the end, it was really designed as kind of a balance of competing interests, if you will. But I think at the end of the day, it certainly addresses our moratorium issue. And I think it creates opportunities for these three property owners over time to, to really realize some, some enhanced value in their properties because of what the first project would, will be, which will, which is the hospital. So again, it, we tried to address a lot of things, and unfortunately, and I discussed this with the planning commission too. At the end of the day, if we're gonna have zoning, which I presume we are, once we write zoning ordinances, there's, there's going to be uses that are permitted, there's gonna be uses that aren't gonna be permitted. And if we're gonna have zoning, that's what zoning does. And in this case, I think, again, we've tried to take a balanced approach. But I don't disagree with Leroy that there could be some impact here because we don't know what the future's gonna bring with any one of those particular properties.
I'd like to make a couple more comments, Robbie. One thing is, the planning commission talked about, this is a hillside there, and this is a wooded area. And, and yeah, we don't want some business down there, it's putting out pollution and it's blowing up towards the hospital and stuff like that. We talked about that. But we also talked about too, that every time we amend something and we change something, it's, it's five, ten thousand dollars to rewrite these amendments and do all this stuff. And they have to be done legally and all this. And we try to do things to protect ourselves. And then we turn around, and six months later, somebody wants to do something. And then it's another five, six thousand dollars to write things up and get a change back again. And we could not see, at least three of us on the planning commission could not see any long-term effect or some kind of drastic effect. Because everybody wants the Mayo Clinic to go out there, we want the jobs, we want whatever's gonna work for them. But we could not see how this would affect them. And we did feel that if we did this, we are probably gonna have to come back. Now, there's one thing that he brought up, as long as they operate the way they are, they're grandfathered in. But Randy Retzko has got like two or three buildings out there. And if he's strictly storage now with somebody, and somebody came, came in and wanted to do something different with that building, he does not qualify that. If Lubke out there, he's got that building set up for a restaurant and a dance hall and for auctions. And if that sits for a year, and somebody in his family takes over the building and comes back and wants to open that up, that does not qualify to be used for that again. Unless he comes back, like Dave says, and has that amended again. So I, I don't, I just want everybody to be aware of, I think it's a pretty important issue. And he's, our zoning, like Dave said, we have to have zoning. But sometimes we just keep making things more complicated. I don't, I don't know what the answer is to this one. Thank you.
I, I would just like to say, Leroy, because I was at the planning commission meeting. You put forward a number of unfortunate scenarios. But I, I'll give you a scenario. What if the hospital doesn't, if we don't do this? What if the hospital decides, you know, we're not gonna build because such and such a firm is gonna come into one of those three spots?
I think then that we'd have to deal with it. And, and why would the Mayo Clinic do that? I don't know.
Oh, I, I know very well why they wouldn't if a certain business showed up there.
Then I'd almost, the Irishman in me would almost rather shoot this down and see if that happens.
So you'd rather lose a hundred and some jobs?
No, I don't wanna lose the hospital. I want the hospital, I want everything. But I also, I mean, I don't, I don't know what's gonna wanna go out there. Does a Ronald McDonald House wanna go out there? What's gonna qualify for this area? We're doing a lot of this stuff, not, not because we got something against Mayo Clinic. We're doing a lot of this stuff to be worried about the class act situation out there. And that's another whole situation, that they have freedom, they have rights, and I don't like it. And I, I guess I don't have to like it. But they have rights to, to do what they wanna do, and that gets tied into this too. So the last thing I'm here is, and I, I really can't sit here and believe that the Mayo Clinic would pass judgment on us with these three properties that they wouldn't build or something? I guess I don't quite understand that. I, I really don't understand that part.
Right, but I don't understand some of your arguments too, that one of the three owners may or may not be able to do something. Obviously, if they bring forward something through that amendment process, and it sounds reasonable, it can probably go forward. There is the extra step, yes, I'll, I'll go with that. But, but you're, you're putting forward all these bad things that could happen. We could have some very good things happen because of this.
And I agree with that. And that's what I, I'm not worried about the good things, I'm worried about the bad things. And, and what can happen? I, I could see that if we did this, that that bare piece of land out there might sell for a premium price. If the valuation in that area really goes up, the property taxes and stuff are gonna go up on the Retzko property and the Lubke property because of that. Now, you can say that's a good thing, their value went up, but then they have to sell. And if they have to sit there for five years, Randy Retzko talked about it in the last year, his taxes went up something like a hundred and five percent. Well, the valuation goes up and they jump like that again, he moved out, rented out another part of the building to pay for the extra taxes went up. If it takes five years for them to sell, are we, are we putting this tax burden on them that they really can't afford? So, yeah, I, it's complicated.
Is the, did the, did the hospital mention anything about, about this? Were they involved in the process at all?
The, the hospital is aware of, of the direction that this is going, and haven't spoken to me to be in opposition to this.
They haven't spoken in opposition?
Have not spoken in opposition to what's being proposed here. Now, they're, they're aware of, of this whole planning process and of the moratorium and this recommended solution.
Is their main objection, or their, do they see a problem with one particular business that's, that's been mentioned here as being perhaps going, coming near them? Is that the main reason that they're?
I think they're interested, as any developer landowner would be, is they're, they have a product that they're proposing to develop in this community on property that they own. And there's neighboring properties, there will always be neighboring properties around them. And they're looking for compatible land uses that will complement their investment in the community. That's what they're looking for.
But they understand in a community that's developing, there are certain businesses that will, may or may not come in that they may not approve of, they may approve of. They don't have, they shouldn't have final arbitrary, you know, dictatorial rights over what they're coming in or not.
This doesn't, this doesn't give any one of the four landowners, the hospital or the three private owners, this doesn't grant them any veto authority, any particular influence in terms of what happens on property that they don't own. It's all within the context of the zoning ordinance that's gonna regulate it.
The zoning ordinance does do that. And it influences zoning ordinance, and they do have an indirect, obviously have an indirect.
But the administrators of the ordinance are up there, not them.
I mean, we could, we could deny this. I mean, we could turn it down. And, but there could be more costly litigation by not passing this, letting the moratorium expire to try to keep, because we approve, we can approve or disapprove any business license out there. I mean, the council can do that. But you may end up in, in court paying a lot more money than you wanna pay to try to, to litigate this without the ordinance in place.
With this ordinance, do other communities have something like this, when they have established businesses around that do, that do this, where there's zoning?
Well, the city did it in like two thousand, when did we update our code last? Six, is that what it was?
Two thousand six, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand six, the city did the exact same thing. We updated our city code and we completely redid our zoning map, and we created a number of non-conforming uses.
Well, not, not to mention some spot zoning issues that came because of that.
Yeah, so it's, it's not, yeah, it's not unusual at all. I mean, zoning changes. And, you know, the land use around, you know, the number of these properties out here are, we're either not in the city originally or on the very edge of the city. Now, as the city pushes out and grows around them, clearly zoning, their uses are gonna change around them. So, you know, in this situation, you can't, there's no way you can create a zoning code definition for, for an area, district that meets every possible scenario. What we did with this was try to do the best we could to protect what we knew would be the major investment and we hope economic driver in that area. You know, you need an anchor when you put in, you know, any sort of new growth area, new development. And obviously, the Mayo Clinic Hospital is, is that anchor. So what do you wanna see around that then, that will be the, the right sort of development to, to take advantage of that anchor? 'Cause if you get the wrong sort of development that comes in next to it, you can completely eliminate the benefit that we could've had for the future growth. Now, there's no guarantee when the hospital goes in, we'll see a whole bunch of these uses going around it with the, you know, with other clinics, professional buildings, things like that. But our hope is that they will. But to do that, we wanna make sure that it's desirable to them to, to come in and, and develop around the clinic. So yeah, it will have an effect on these three parcels. And, and like we've said, there's, there's ways that we can address that if, if somebody wants to sell a parcel for something that's not clearly identified in this. But, you know, in addition, the planning commission can also review this and continue to review this and decide maybe that they wanna say, okay, instead of just these things, we'd like to see auto dealerships or whatever added. And we can amend it. You know, amending the code, it, it won't cost us five or six thousand to, to amend the code. You know, once we have something in place, it's a simple amendment by saying that we wanna see some other, you know, changes maybe in there. But our biggest concern is, is that once the moratorium expires in January, we have no control of what we exist, existing have in our zoning. And our existing zoning code really never considered the fact that the Mayo Clinic was gonna build a hospital there. So what, what we're saying is, is we need to have controls in, in place if we wanna protect the investment that the city's doing. I mean, we're putting two million dollars into interchange, which we know is safety and, and those sort of things. But it also is, would not, you know, the, the hospital wouldn't be going in there if it wasn't for the interchange. So, you know, we have our public investments that we're putting into this hospital project and projects that kind of will go around it, utility extensions, the interchange, those sort of things that, while they have other benefits, they clearly benefit this, this as well. We wanna try to protect those investments by seeing more use than just a hospital. We wanna see other things go in out there. We wanna see other things go in out there. Um, so we think this is the best way to do that and to get there. It may not be perfect, and we can change it. We can amend it. The planning commission can take all the time they want to, to look at other options and bring back a proposal saying, okay, we'd rather see it look like this, and, and we could change it then, and we can amend it then. And that's not a problem. It's the same thing we're doing now, um, just as an amendment to what, uh, what we're adopting hopefully here. But our concern is if we don't have any controls in place, we don't know what could happen out there in the meantime, while we try to work out the details to make it perfect, which I'm not sure we can really ever do in this situation. Um, and then if the wrong use does come in, no matter what it is, um, it could really have a negative impact on, on what's happening out there.
You know, Aaron, just one quick thing to add to what you said, is that actually, the hospital land is all north of the road that's gonna go to twenty-five. So technically, um, if there is some worry about a class act situation, they could build on the south side of that highway, and they'll be out of this zoning. Uh, so...
Aren't they already building on the south side or west, west and south?
They would also be out of the city.
They would, yeah, they would be out...
They're south of the Mayo site that's also in Cannon Falls Township.
Yeah, that would be out of the city, and, and actually, they wouldn't...
I mean, we'd have no control...
Well, yeah, we, we do technically, that's within our urban growth area, so the county would not allow them to build anything there. Uh, because anything that close to the city, the county would look at as it should be hooked up to city utilities and, and, and be within a city if you're gonna have that sort of use. So technically, no, the Goodyear County would not allow anyone to build, um, just on the other side. They, that would fall into our control, because we do have urban, uh, urban boundary areas where within that area, um, the only sort of development that can occur on a commercial, industrial, or large-scale residential basis would be if the city approved of it and said, yeah, that's fine. They can stay in the county, in the township and do it. Otherwise, no, the, what the county would say is if you wanna build, get annexed into the city, and then you can build. So we do have that control still on the other side.
So, does this extend our moratorium?
Nope, nope, not...
That's gonna expire the end of the year?
That'll go away, so all the, you know, like when we've had, um, uh, the Cannon Power Sports and their expansion and, and those sort of things, that we had to go through that process of saying, you're exempt from the moratorium, go ahead and build, and that's all gone then. So this, this expires at the end of the year, and when we adopt this, then it controls the area we think is that development area around the hospital that we wanted to, to, to focus in on. And it frees up everything else and the rest of that, that zoning area to, to go ahead and build according to the code and, you know, all that. So, yep. It gets rid of all of it.
So this is a, a two-fold request?
Well, i- i- the moratorium's set to expire anyways, so the, we'll let the moratorium expire, but then this gives us those controls that we've been looking for on that area.
And excludes class act coming in?
Or any other related business like that, yes.
Okay.
Aren't those businesses automatically excluded because of, uh, the, the, uh, the nature of the work of the hospital or the people who'd be involved in it? It's not?
No.
Only, only schools and, uh, religious, uh, churches?
Yep.
Any further discussion? If not, the chair will take a motion, uh, to approve the first reading of Resolution nineteen ninety-three, the Comprehensive Municipal Plan Amendment. Uh, along with that, uh, which is item, uh, seven F, uh, introduction and first reading of ordinance three twenty-four, rezoning property to the southeast campus, uh, PUD.
I, I will second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. Now, let's do a roll call here. We don't have to, but I'd like to.
Merle?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Morris?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Leroy?
No.
The ayes have it. The ayes do have it, uh, and the motions pass. That will bring us to, uh, uh, reports. And before we get there, just like to say, uh, thanks for all the hard work, uh, and the discussion on, on those two ordinances from everybody. A lot of hard work's going on that, and, uh, we hope it's all for the good, Leroy, as we move forward. At this time, we'll move to reports. Mr. Maroney?
Justin pointed out to me that on the planning commission, on the meeting schedule list, uh, the planning commission is meeting Monday, December tenth, not Tuesday, December tenth. So, just that correction. That's all. Thank you, Justin.
Mr. Henderson? Justin?
The same as Dave. The library board will be on Monday as well.
And I see the library's coming along pretty well. The brick's starting to go up. Looks pretty nice.
On the schedule.
And under budget. Brenda? Chief?
Just a, a couple of things. You know, obviously, we're going into, uh, Thanksgiving weekend holiday. Just remind people to drive safely, uh, while they're traveling to and from wherever they may be going, whether it's, uh, early morning shopping or, uh, a long day with, with relatives. Second to that, the police commission, I'd hope to get a, a meeting set up this month. Just schedule-wise, it does not look like it'll work. And what I'm gonna plan to do is try to have it after our first council meeting in December, uh, so I can give an update on where we are and trying to get our part timers and, uh, spot replaced. Uh, Officer Ayers has started full-time and, uh, seems to be doing a very good job for us. That's all I have.
Aaron? Well, no. Merle?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Be safe.
Rod?
Nothing.
Bill?
Uh, nothing.
Leroy?
I double Merle's thoughts.
Phil?
I was just saying, uh, I was just wondering about, um, Dave and the EDA, about my future ideas about what should happen to downtown. I'd like to see the city buy the old Napa building, which is bare now, right now, which is not being used. I think that would be, uh, could be used for incubating businesses, small businesses. I'd also like to, I wonder if the city is in any, um, any discussions or future discussions about, uh, Farmers and Merchants Bank building downtown? If they have any plans of moving? I'd like to see them move out to their new building. I'd like to see it made into a family center, a community center, that building. I'd like to see that eventually happen. But you don't have any ideas about that?
They're still using it.
They're still using it. But I'd like to see that eventually happen. I'd also like to see Brewster's moved out to, to the outside of town too, but that's not gonna happen either. But, um, but, uh, all those things would be nice to re- rejuvenate downtown. Not that they're going to happen, of course, but... That's all.
Heather? Just like to say, uh, thanks, uh, to everybody for your job well done, uh, on, uh, all the work that's been going in. Uh, I know the EDA's been busy, uh, Justin monitoring what's going on with the library. The, uh, police department's been doing a great job. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. No second.
And we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll go into the planning session.